Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that this government body has to pray to you out loud. We lift up and ask for your healing hand on Commissioner Bain. We pray that you would give his family the peace that surpasses all understanding as they work through this challenging time. We also ask your blessing on all our men and women in uniform. And Lord, please give us wisdom and discernment tonight as we make decisions that affect our community. Help us make decisions that strengthen Williamson County to your glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is a roll call. If you're present, push your yes button and confirm. Record to roll, Jeff.
Commissioners Bain, Commissioner Bethard, Commissioner Cook, and Commissioner Ryan, absent.
And I've heard from everybody, and one's traveling and the rest of them don't feel well, and I appreciate them not showing up. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the January 14th County Commission meeting. Copies were mailed to each one. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Chalafont the second. Any additions or deletions? I see none. If you're in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they pass unanimously. Next items, introduction and acceptance of the Highway Commission meeting minutes. They were mailed to each county commissioner. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Little on the second. Any additions or deletions of those? I see none. If you're in favor of those, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They pass unanimously. Next is citizens' communication, and we have none, so we will move on to communications and messages. First thing I have, we have Resolution 15 and Resolution 16 that are late filed, although that was due to a clerical error in the mayor's office, and they are both public hearing. And so they're at the first of the agenda, in your packet. If there's no objection, we're good there, so I see none. So we will, I think they're in order, Resolution 15 and 16, and we'll hear those. And also, I think Commissioner Hancock.
I mean, excuse me, 213-8.
213-8. All right.
And the reason is they need a little more time to work out the agreement.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So we will pull Resolution 213-8 to be heard at a later date. Let's turn it over to Travis. Next we'll hear from County Mayor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'd like to ask the sheriff to come up, along with Shannon Martin and her daughter to come up tonight. We have a proclamation we'd like to do tonight. Many of you may know Shannon and her daughter Hazel Martin. They live out in the Leapers Fork area, and this proclamation tonight, if the sheriff would do the honors for me and read it, since it pertains to his particular jurisdictional area, I would appreciate it very much.
Me too.
Proclamation of appreciation. Whereas Reserve deputies of the Williamson County Sheriff's Department contribute to our community by providing hundreds of volunteer hours, providing law enforcement services, such as working on patrol, providing additional security at the courthouse, additional security at the jail during visitation, serving civil process, working at the various community events, such as the Williamson County Fair, also the Williamson County Commission meetings. Whereas the Martin Foundation has contributed to the well-being of the Middle Tennessee community for more than 15 years by providing financial support to social services, the arts, education, children's programs, and various special projects. And whereas Williamson County is proud to recognize the Martin Foundation for their generous donation to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department to be used by the Reserve deputies who are responsible for their own expenses incurred relating to equipment, uniforms, and training for the services they provide. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Williamson County, the sheriff of Williamson County and the Williamson County Reserve deputies, that I, Roger C. Anderson, as mayor of Williamson County, do hereby express our sincere appreciation to the Martin Foundation for their faithful support and generosity, not only to the Williamson County Sheriff's Department, but numerous other organizations throughout Williamson County that improve and enhance the quality of life of all citizens of Williamson County. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the great seal of the county of Williamson to be affixed at Franklin this, the 11th day of February 2013. Rogers C. Anderson, County Mayor, Williamson County. Thank you, Shannon, very, very much.
I thought we had come to get evicted back to Davidson County, so I'm thrilled that this was it. We are so blessed, and Charlie's on his way back from Wisconsin and regrets that he couldn't be here, but I know so many of you, and we don't deserve this. The privilege belongs to us, getting to be in such a wonderful community. Thank you. God bless you.
Next, we have a proclamation by Commissioner Travis Hawkins.
I am honored tonight to present a proclamation honoring the Franklin High School Marching Rebels. They're here tonight, and I'd like to ask that the members of that band come up, please. We've got the director, David Adelit, and assistant director, Michael Holland. We've also got drum majors, Colley Spencer, Hannah Cavender, Autumn Triggs, and Heather Trotter. These talented youngsters performed up in a national competition in Jacksonville, Alabama. They were, there are 174 students in this band, and under the direction of Director Adelit, they took first place in a competition among 24 bands from six states, competing at the Bands of America Regional Championship there in Jacksonville, Alabama. In addition to winning that, this band also advanced to the Grand National Championship November 7 through 10 at the Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis. And during the preliminary competition, the band placed 15th among 34 bands and advanced to the semifinal competition, and was awarded second place among all class AAA bands participating in the semifinals of the national contest. They were awarded the Tennessee's Governor Cup Trophy for winning first place at the 51st Annual Contest of Champions High School Marching Band Competition held at the Middle Tennessee State University in Murfreesboro. The proclamation reads, "Now therefore be it resolved that the Williamson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this, the 14th day of January," that's not right, but, "hereby congratulates this band and recognizes the level of excellence exemplified by these outstanding individuals known collectively as the 2012-13 Franklin High School Marching Band." And these are signed by me, Mr. Walton, and Mayor Anderson. I'd like to congratulate this band and say that I had the pleasure of attending the honor band performance up at Brentwood Baptist Church with my five-year-old, Willa, who took a great deal of joy watching all these talented students perform, and wanted to go up and shake their hands afterwards because she thought they were superstars. And so do I. Mr. Adelit, if you'd like to say something.
Sure, thank you. As wonderful as the awards that our students won this past fall, as wonderful as that is, the greatest thing about it is working with these fine young people and on a daily basis, and seeing their level of commitment and dedication to excellence. And just for you to know how well they represent this great county, whether it be here in Williamson County, or whether it's abroad or in other states, it's just a pleasure to be around these wonderful students. Thank you so much.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Deputy Youngblood and Deputy Dekel are here, and appreciate y'all, and thank you for being here and your support tonight. Next, moving on to reports of county offices. First of all, we'll hear from county mayors, Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, have Nina come forward and give us a snapshot of the last 30 days or so on the financial condition of the county. Nina?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Tonight in your reports, we have our report from the Cool Springs Conference Center. We had a check given to us this month for $54,577.16. You have your budget report for the month of December. Everything is on target for midway through the year. And we also have our privileged tax reports this month, and we're still showing a positive trend over the last four years in our privileged tax collections. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Nina? I see none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, unless you've got some questions, that'll conclude my report for this time.
Any questions for the mayor? I see none. Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Director of Schools, Dr. Mike Looney.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to see everybody tonight. We do have a couple of resolutions for your consideration tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions on those as the time approaches. School system is running well. Our students will be out on Monday for the holiday. Our teachers will be working. Upon your request, several of you have asked me to do a very short presentation on charter schools. I am not here tonight to debate the merits of charter school, but rather just to go over the law. I understand that we'll have an opportunity to have much more robust dialogue about the value of charter schools and the possible implications on Williamson County schools. I have prepared a presentation for you tonight. You should have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, a hard copy of that. Under current Tennessee law, charter schools are public schools operated by independent nonprofit governing bodies that must include parents. In Tennessee, public charter school students are measured against the same academic standards as students in other public schools. So they have to take the same assessments as required by the state, TCAP, ACT, and of course exams, et cetera. The local school board's role is to ensure that only those charter schools open and remain open that are meeting the needs of the students in the LEA. That's the appropriate section of the law. There was a question that was asked about whether or not teachers participate in the retirement system and insurance benefits. And so, as you can see in this section of the law, all teachers and employees of a public charter school that converts from a public school shall continue to participate in the same retirement program as teachers and employees of the local Board of Education. In addition, teachers and employees of a new public charter school shall participate in the same retirement program as all other employees of the LEA. There is actually some movement on the Hill that addresses this. I was in a meeting today, not sure where that legislation's going, but there is a request or a movement to alter the language of this particular section of the statute, but this is current law. Charter school powers. Essentially what happens, I'm not going to read this to you, but essentially what happens is somebody that wants to open a charter school, or parents that want to convert a failing school to a charter school, make application to the local school board. The local school board looks at the application, evaluates it, and makes the determination whether or not they would benefit the boys and girls of the particular jurisdiction that the school board has oversight of. If the school board approves that, or if through an appeals process, the charter school gets opened outside of the school board's original denial, then the charter schools do have some powers that traditional schools or our public schools in Williamson County don't have. There are three listed, or four listed, under the statute. First, the charter school, while it falls under the jurisdiction of the school board and the county commission, can, independent of either body, contract for services except for the management or operation of the charter school by a for-profit entity. In addition, a charter school can buy, sell, or lease property without school board approval or county commission approval. In addition, they can borrow money as needed. So if they need to get a loan from Fifth Third Bank or some bank, then they can go and borrow money. And then fourth, they can pledge its assets as security as they borrow or lease property. Where do they get their money from? There are two sources of money for charter schools. First, there are federal grants that support charter school operations and opening, and there are private endowments that support charter schools. But by and large, their funds come straight from the LEA. And the funds that they get are based on the average daily membership allocation per pupil to an LEA, to a school district. In round numbers, we spend about $8,000 per pupil. So if a school was going to open, with a charter school was going to open, got through the process, and they were going to open with 100 students, that means the school district would send $8 million to the charter operator to operate. We have no entitlement to keep any of those funds at the district, no administrative overhead, anything like that. So 100% of it goes to the charter provider. If, in addition, if a public charter school elects to provide transportation other than through an agreement with the LEA, in other words, if they want to provide their own transportation, then in addition to getting the $8,000 per pupil, they would get an amount equal to the cost of transporting students throughout the rest of the district. I'm going to save this slide for a later time because it talks about Williamson County school system's performance and how the performance of other charter schools has panned out in America and in the state of Tennessee. And so I have a listing of all the schools that are current operators in charter schools that are charter schools in Tennessee, and I compare that to how we're performing as a school district. And in all cases, 100% of the cases, we outperform all the charter school providers in the state of Tennessee. The data at the national level suggests that 17% of charter school providers provide a better student outcome as measured by the state assessment than the traditional school that those students came from. Let me repeat that. 17% of charter school providers do a better job than their traditional setting. The balance of them either do the same or worse as far as it relates to student achievement results. I've been very short. I just wanted to share with you what the law is and what the facts are here in Williamson County, and I look forward to more discussion about charter schools and how they may or may not impact Williamson County. I will just say that we do have a letter of intent for a charter school to open in Williamson County. They have only submitted the letter of intent, and so the next step in that process is they have to submit a complete application, and then it goes through the vetting process with the school district. The soonest that charter school could open is in the 14, 15 school year. There's a lot of steps in between now and then. The focus of that particular charter school application, as is currently portrayed in the letter of intent, is to open a school that focuses on farm and agricultural in the community. We have two schools in our public school system that offer agricultural programs, and that currently is Fairview High School and Page High School. Page High School has about 100 students participating in the ag program, and Fairview has a little bit more than 30. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have about charter schools.
Dr. Looney, and I want to add to that or make a comment that I think the county's intent, on February 25th, we have our education meeting at 5:30, and we're trying to have it here. We encourage the school board to be here and all county commissioners, and there will be time for debate there. Debate may not be the right word, but we'll have pros and cons and try to educate everybody on that. So I just want to throw that out there and invite everybody that may be interested. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Dr. Looney, I'd like to clarify one point. You said it would be $8 million for, to give to this charter school based on that scenario. I think it's only $800,000. It's 8,000 per student.
You're correct. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner Danner?
I just wanted to, Dr. Looney, thank you for the basics on this. And I do, but because this is televised and we only have your facts here, I think that it's pretty well-known. Can you go over what it is that you and the board voted on? Did you have a resolution that you voted on that pretty much said you are going to deny any requests for charter schools in this county?
That is not accurate.
What did you pass?
What the school board voted on, the resolution they voted on, was proposed legislation that would allow charter schools to come to Williamson County. That does not mean that the board would not vote in favor of a charter school if the charter school could prove that they would provide a service that we can't provide in Williamson County, and/or that they could produce a result that's better than ours in Williamson County. And as you know, and as the record reflects, there are no charter schools in Tennessee that produce the kind of results that we do currently.
And because of that, I just wanted to make it known to those watching that there are, you know, not all the county commissioners up here are against charter schools, that, you know, we look forward to the debate and the further community conversation at the Education Committee.
Yes, ma'am, I've noted that. Thank you.
I see no further questions. Dr. Looney, thank you.
Thank you.
Judy, did you... Commissioner Hayes? I'm sorry.
I'd like to extend an invitation. The Williamson County Solid Waste and Williamson Recycles would like to invite all of you and everyone to the Wilson Pipe Recycling Center reopening on Tuesday, February the 26th at 2:00 PM. That center has been expanded, improved, and is ready for the ribbon cutting to say it's all in readiness, and I hope you'll come and see what a good job our solid waste department does and our Williamson recycles. So invite you to come at 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Moving on, there's no elections or appointments. Next, we have the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion. There's only two items, I believe, on the consent agenda, which is notaries and accepting roads in Silverstream Farms. Mr. Dwight Jones, Commissioner Little the second. It's loaded on the machine. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, signify by pushing your yes button.
Voting on, I was going to say, voting on this, I'm going to have to abstain because that includes notaries, and my name is on the notar-
Okay, duly noted. Thank you, thank you, Sheriff. Right? Let's see, where am I? If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. If you need to abstain, push your abstain button and confirm.
That's right. There you go. Confirm.
There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote. Mr. Wigby?
Nineteen yes, one abstention.
And the consent agenda passes. No unfinished business. Moving on to new business, zoning. We'll have a public hearing regarding late-file Resolution 2-13-15, Resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding conservation subdivisions in the Hamlet zoning district. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you would like to speak to this, please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and we request that you limit it to three minutes. So the public hearing's now open. Does anyone like to address this particular resolution? I see no one. Last call. All right, public hearing's closed. Now we'll move on to late-file Resolution 2-13-15, Resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14 regarding conservation subdivisions in the Hamlet zoning district. Commissioner Danner?
Would you like me to read the whole thing?
No, just move for approval.
Okay, move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell the second. Okay, explanation, Commissioner Danner. Well, let's see, wait just a minute. Let me read the rule. Planning Commission passed it unanimously, but I don't, yeah, it only went before the Planning Commission. No, explanation. Nine to zero. Okay, Planning Commission was nine to zero.
This just allows, it's a text amendment, and it allows for the Hamlet zoning district, which used to be the crossroads. It just gives them the ability, the option to have conservation subdivisions in their zone. That's in a nutshell.
Any questions? I see none. Are you ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 2-13-15, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Mr. Wigby.
Twenty yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Now moving on to the next public hearing regarding late-file Resolution 2-13-16, Resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding property owner notification of map amendments. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing, and like before, if you'll come up and state your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. So the public hearing's open if anyone would like to speak to that. I see none. Last call.
Can y'all explain what that means?
I will.
Would you mind explaining?
Would you mind explaining that?
Happy to.
Public hearing's closed. All right, now moving on to the resolution. Resolution of the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners to Adopt Amendments to the 2013 Williamson County Zoning Ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding property owner notification of map amendments. Commissioner Danner?
I'm going to ask Christie to come up-
Let's get it on the floor.
Oh, make a move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell II. You're going to defer to...
Well, I'm going to, I'll say real quickly what it does, and then I would like Christie to elaborate, but basically it changes how you're notified when your land is, zoning is changed via a map amendment. We make many, many text amendments, and it would be, it would be difficult and cumbersome to try to mail to everybody for every little text amendment, especially when a text amendment affects the entire county. But when your zoning changes on the map, which is like what happened with the countywide rezone, now instead of just an ad in the paper and a sign in the ground saying there's a hearing coming up, you will be mailed a postcard from the county telling you that your land is being affected to the degree of it being a map change, you're changing like from crossroads to Hamlet or from Hamlet to Village, so you will be personally notified. But Christie, I'd like her to elaborate a little bit on that and what the differences are between what's going on here and maybe what's up at the state level.
Thank you, Commissioner Danner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Actually, you did a really good synopsis of that. In the past, we've always notified property owners, generally property owners when there's a map amendment, which is also known as a rezone, they're the ones generally initiating the request. But what this does is it makes clear, and the language we chose was very intentional when I worked with Commissioner Danner to come up with that language, the property owner whose land is subject to the rezoning or the map amendment. And for instance, if the commission decided they were going to take all of the RD1 and rezone it to something else, then everyone who owns property in the RD1 would then receive something in the mail rather than just, as you said, the statutory requirement, which is the notification in the paper, which we always do, we post it on the website, and then there's the sign on the property in the general area. But when you do a very large rezone, in the past, we wouldn't have gotten a postcard notice or something individually noticed, so that's what this accomplishes as far as the notice is concerned, and it was unanimous at the Planning Commission. Of course, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor Andrews?
Mr. Chairman and Commission members, I'm in favor of this, but I do want to bring to your attention a bill that's on the Hill that is being discussed very actively in changing who and how we notify property owners and when we notify property owners. Under this particular scenario here, if this was, if the current bill in Nashville should pass, the difference in the cost would be over 200% to Joe's budget. Joe has a budget on mailings, this current year we're in, of about $5,500, $5,600. The proposed legislation on the Hill is to notify everyone, not just the affected area but across the county, that has to be notified on these text amendments or map amendments. And that would result in the same type, based on the parcels we have, the current postage rate of about 10, over $10,000. So I know that there is a significant push to notify, and that's fine for the local areas that we're affecting, but I really have some difficulties from a cost standpoint mailing a mass mailer out to everyone that's not necessarily affected. So when you see these coming, these things coming before you, please keep in mind, on the surface, they sound good, but when we put the numbers to them and actuarially figure this information out, it has a significant cost. In this case, it would just, that one item would completely take all of his money for advertising, which is going to affect the way that you do business. Christie might want to touch on a little bit more, Jeff.
If I may, I have a question. Like, I think this is the third or fourth amendment we've made to what we passed in May. So what's on the Hill, you would have to mail that four times, right? If this is the fourth time?
Essentially, yes. The difference, the one that Commissioner Danner has here today is for map amendments, for rezones. It's very specific, the property that's affected, it's identifiable. The way the legislation is drafted, that's, the General Assembly has before them, it's in subcommittee, but it would be for any type of change. A text amendment, for instance, we're coming next month back to you with some setbacks that we're having established for non-conforming lots. We told you when we passed the zoning ordinance, there'd be some tweaks here and there. Well, determining who's affected by a potential setback of a non-conforming lot is impossible, essentially, to determine. So in order to comply with the legislation as it's drafted, we would in fact have to send notification to every unincorporated parcel, a parcel in unincorporated Williamson County, and that's, that's the numbers that Joe ran. It would be $10,000 something dollars just for that one notification. And it's also drafted in such a way that's so broad that it not only deals with zoning ordinance amendments, but it deals with other actions related to zoning. It talks about actions of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and instead of talking about adjacent properties or contiguous properties, it talks about affected properties. And so Joe and I are devil's advocate discussion. If we're talking about a text amendment, are we also talking about affected properties that may be touching properties in, that are in Rutherford County, but they're touching Williamson County properties? It's very broad. It's very hard to understand. I understand the intent, but the way it's drafted is very broad and would result in significant cost to local government in this county in particular. But we wanted to bring that to your attention so that you would know it was out there, but also so that you would understand that it's distinguishable from what Commissioner Danner's trying to do here and what she's accomplishing in this resolution. And I'll try and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Just a follow-up. So basically, mine is a piece of cake. I appreciate your support.
I see none. Thank you, Christie. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 2-13-16, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-13-2, Resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners approval of $1,313,900 for the purchase of buses for the 2013-14 school year from unappropriated fund balance. Commissioner Langston? Mr. Chalafant II. Committee report, school board, 11 yes, zero no. Education committee?
6 for, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee is 5 for, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This will allow the school board to go and purchase the buses they're going to need for next year and get them in by the August deadline they need to get them in. As it says, it comes from the school fund balance.
All right. Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 2-13-2, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Mr. Wigby. Okay, there we go.
20 yes, zero no.
All right, resolution passes. Resolution 2-13-3, Resolution appropriating $165,000 of excess central cafeteria fund balance for replacement, renovation, and new equipment. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval, second.
Commissioner, who was my second? Commissioner Williams, I'm sorry. School board, 11 yes, zero no. Education committee?
6 for, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee is 5 for, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
As it says, this allows the school board to purchase equipment needed in various cafeterias from excess funds.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Dwight Jones?
Yes, Dr. Looney, could you try to touch on very briefly on what this is? If you may, just real briefly on what's getting replaced, what's being fixed, or what might this money be going to?
Yes, sir, I actually don't have a list before me tonight, I don't think.
Well, I don't make total detail. I mean, I just, I know it's something in the cafeteria.
What we have to do is, we're not allowed to have over 90 days of fund balance in the cafeteria fund, and so we have to either turn the money back in or spend it to replace obsolete equipment or to become more efficient. And so this is replacing equipment that we believe can, we can find a better way of serving kids with new or updated equipment.
I mean, I guess my question kind of was, though, I didn't know if you had any... I've heard bits and pieces of we're going to try to put dishwashers back in schools. My question with that is, is why did we ever remove them in the first place? Now, that might have been before your tenure here, and I understand that, and you might be kind of catching the run of it now, but changing back and forth is kind of-
Yes, I can speak to that.
-wasting money to me.
Yes, sir, and I don't disagree with you, and I was not here when we removed the dishwashers from the district, but the reality of it is the cost of the styrofoam and paper products and the waste that we produce, rather than washing the trays that we could be using, is, I don't think, good management, so we are going back to a dishwasher service slowly but surely.
Commissioner Danner?
I don't need to ask a question. I'll look it up myself.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Looney.
Yes, sir.
I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 2-13-3, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2-13-4, Resolution appropriating $7,500 in the 2012-13 Extended School Program Fund for Needed Equipment. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval, second.
Commissioner Little II. School board, 11 yes, zero no. Education committee?
6 for, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee is 5 for, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This will allow the school board to buy some necessary equipment for the after-school program, walkie-talkies and other equipment. The funds will come from this program.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 2-13-4, signify by pushing your yes button. Opposed, your no button. There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2012-13 capital projects and county general budgets for public transportation, commuter van replacement purchases budget by $527,000. Revenues to come from federal transit funding through the state grant and rider fees. Commissioner Williams?
Move approval, second.
Commissioner Langston II. Budget committee?
Budget committee is 5 for, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
Basically, what this does, have 17 replacement van vehicles that are exceeded 100,000 miles, and the funds are coming from the feds and through state grant rider fees.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of 2-13-6, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Travis? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, zero no.
Resolution passes. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into an agreement with the Department of Army to provide a local match for the Harpeth River feasibility study and to amend the 2012-2013 capital projects budget by an amount of $50,000.
Move for approval, second.
Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Hayes II. Property committee?
Property, 6 for, one against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee is 5 for, zero against.
Stormwater appeals board, 7 for?
Yeah, 7. I'll give it, 7 for, zero against.
I'm sorry. Who would like to speak to this? Mary, you want?
Okay, either both of us can.
Yeah, I was just going to say that on the stormwater, where it initially came through, this is a feasibility study that will be done, of course, by the Corps of Engineers, and the benefit is going to be for our county with this. And I, if I could ask Floyd Heflin to come up from our stormwater area to kind of shed a little more light on this for those that might have questions.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, this is, we've been encouraged by the Corps to participate in this study. Started after the 2010 flood, they had some appropriations to allow them to do some things in the Harpeth watershed, and so they approached several local sponsors about this feasibility study. It requires a 50-50 local federal match. So, you know, right now, the sponsors, local sponsors are City of Franklin, City of Brentwood, Metro, and Franklin, and, or, I just say Brentwood, is it Brentwood or Franklin?
And Williamson County.
And us, I'm sorry.
And Williamson County.
And Williamson County. They approached some other communities and just didn't have the resources at this time. But we're proposing, recommending contributing $50,000 from funds in lieu of detention, which has already been collected from stormwater fees. We don't want to use new funding. So Brentwood's proposing $50,000, Franklin about a quarter of a million, Metro about a quarter of a million. So I think just that alone is worth it to us to get updated floodplain information. We could get other benefits. Ecosystem restoration is a possibility. Emergency management benefits, possible flood warning. There's other things that they may identify during this process that could be future benefits. We are not obligated to pursue any of these. Once this feasibility study comes out in the press, I think some of you saw some things about a dry dam, you know, a dry dam is one thing they might look at. I don't think it's anything we would ever, it would ever be feasible from a cost-benefit standpoint for the county. Maybe so for Franklin or for Metro where you've got higher density populations, you've got more critical infrastructure that could be damaged by flooding. But total project cost is $1.4 million. Once again, I recommend that we participate.
Any questions for Mr. Heflin? I see none. Commissioner Brockman, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to thank Floyd for articulating all the issues that I think some of us might have had questions about, and I've been assured by people who are knowledgeable about the study that local input is important and will happen, and information is powerful, and so some of this information, particularly personally, I'm interested in the restoration possibilities and in terms of the lost wetlands, et cetera, and the erosion on the banks of the Harpeth, and it's our great, wonderful natural resource. So I think, even though maybe I'm a tree hugger, and you might think I might be skeptical of the Corps of Engineers, I think we should support this, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Brockman. Commissioner Hayes?
I was just going to make a comment that Floyd went on and made, that this does not obligate us. It's for information and education, but he verified that this does not obligate us to any additional money or to do anything in the future, and I thought that was an important thing to note.
And I agree. Any discussion? Further discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 2-13-7, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Judy? Yours didn't take. There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 21313, resolution appropriating and amending the 2012-13 Library Budget by $25,929.86. Revenues to come from miscellaneous donations. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval, second.
Commissioner Langston the second. Library board?
540 against.
Budget committee?
540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is funds we received from the City of Franklin and from the various friends of the library organizations to be put to good use within the library system and some memorials and gifts. Just the accounting of it so that we can spend the money.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 21313, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 21314, resolution appropriating and amending the 2012-13 County Clerk's Budget by $15,000 for additional postage. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval, second.
Mr. Ford the second. Budget committee?
540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
There's been an increase through Ms. Anderson's office of online and mailing free car tags. This is projected to, they're projecting an increase, and this is to offset the cost of the postage, having to mail them back out.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 21314, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, 0 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution of the County, Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt a fee schedule, schedules for the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance, originally adopted May 14, 2012. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval, second.
Commissioner Little the second. Planning commission was 94, 0 against. Budget committee?
Budget committee, 540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
I'm going to ask Mr. Horn to come forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have been operating under the same fee schedule under the, for zoning-related matters since 1988. Additionally, due to some of the changes in the nomenclature within the zoning ordinance, we had certain fee categories that no longer fit. So several months ago, I undertook a review of the fees looking at two different parameters. First of all, I went and looked at what called the Donut Counties, Nashville and all the counties that surround Metro, looked at their fee schedule and tried to, and compared it to ours. And then I also tried to look at what, what we were currently charging and the amount of time that came into it. My takeaway from that was, we needed to make an effort to adjust the fees so we could recover essentially our expenses. Philosophically, I feel like we, we work for the taxpayers of Williamson County, and as such, we should be available for their needs. However, things like postage, mailings, public hearings, travel to and from sites, and everything else, I felt like that was something that we needed to look into recovery. So that is how the fee schedule was, was evolved. I will do this perhaps preemptively for, for Commissioner Hayes. She, she approached me this afternoon about a problem in there in that she was a little bit concerned that the, some of the not-for-profits would be unduly, perhaps, impacted by this. And I went back and looked at where we are, in fact, charging fees for, for temporary events. And once you work through all the, all the asterisks at the bottom of the fee schedule, what you find is really the only temporary events we charge for are acceptance of borrow material, borrow pits, firework sales, special events, extensive impact. Those are the big ones. More than 750 people. Pretty good track of multiple days. At this time, sale of alcohol and like that. And temporary asphalt and asphalt processing plants. I made that mistake in front of your committee, Commissioner Williams, and I apologize for that. But at least I'm, at least it's not, I'm going in, I think, the right direction as opposed to the wrong direction.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Did that? Thank you, Joe.
May I respond? Thank you, Joe. I was concerned that churches, schools, other community activities might be adversely affected by this. And even after reading, I felt a lot better after reading the exemptions, but you've clarified it more. And I don't think we want to do anything that hampers the activities that go on that are very positive in our community. And I'm glad to say that you have not.
Understood. Thank you. Any further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 2135, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
20 yes, 0 no.
Thank you. Joe, when will this take effect? Tomorrow? Yes, very good. All right, thank you.
Sorry, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
I had one more project. All right. Resolution 21311, resolution to adopt a policy to permit the county mayor to authorize the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Center for certain events. Commissioner Little?
Yes.
I don't know where 10 is.
Please give him 10.
There we go. I'm sorry. I don't know what happened to my 10. Back up. Resolution 21310, resolution amending Resolution Number 21224 relative to the payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Mars Pet Care U.S. Incorporated concerning the type of ad valorem taxes that the parties originally agreed would be abated.
Move for approval. As everybody will remember last month, this was a resolution that was demated ad nauseam. So we've changed to 2015 to 2014, and I hope we have no other comments.
I see none. Well, wait a minute, have we got one? Commissioner Danner?
I'm going to pull it.
Just want to go on the record that I have nothing against Mars. I just don't believe in tax abatement for a company that's already in the county, and I want to stay consistent with my previous vote. So just want to put that on the record.
Duly noted. It was just pointed out to me, there is a typo on page two. And the date, it, it has last month's commission meeting on 14th day of January, so that should read the 11th day of February 2013, and we will get that changed. You ready to vote? Commissioner Williams pulls it. If you're in favor of this Resolution 21310, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. John? Yours is acting up. There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
18 yes, 2 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 21311, resolution to adopt a policy to permit the county mayor to authorize the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Center for certain events. Commissioner Little?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Langston the second. Did it go in front of Property Committee?
It did.
All right, what was that?
Property committee, 740 against.
All right. Purchase and Insurance Committee?
740 against.
All right. Budget committee?
540 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is what I consider one of the housekeeping, as it is now, to have alcohol. It has to go, they have to make their application. It has to be approved, then approved by committee, and then approved by the commission. The standards they are having to meet are the same. It just takes the approval process to the mayor's office instead of the county commission.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 21311, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Jeff.
19 yes, 1 abstain.
Commissioner, all right. Resolution passes. Resolution 21312, resolution amending the five-year capital improvement program for schools, roads, and fire protection in recreation. Commissioner Williams?
Move for approval, second.
Commissioner Brockman the second. Highway Commission, 44, 0 against. Education committee?
64, 0 against.
Parks and Rec Committee? Law Enforcement Committee? 44, 0 against. Budget committee?
540 against.
Property committee?
34, 1 against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Williams?
This is a five-year improvement, capital improvement for all the different departments. And I think the most important thing about this projection is that approval of this resolution is not to be construed as approval of the individual projects outlined in the attachment.
Very good. Commissioner Danner?
Just to follow up on what Commissioner Williams said. I just, I know that this is not a yes vote to, to each of these plans, but I do have great concern, and I just want it to be part of the public knowledge, that when you add up all of these capital plans just for the year of 1314, they're $73 million they're asking for. I know not all of that's bond money. I know the highway department has their own money. But still, there is clearly more expense than we can afford without a tax increase. And so that I just am looking forward to leadership by the budget committee as to a priorities list of what we can afford to, to say yes to in that year without a tax increase.
Believe me, Commissioner Danner, I'm not afraid to say no.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
Any further discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of 21312, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time.